Hello, hello.
How you do, Ron, Mayor? Everybody. Hey, Mayor, hey, Ron, hey, La.
Hey, how y'all doing?
Good. Hey, Mayor.
How you doing?
Wow, I don't see that fire, crackling fire in the background and snow like I did last time.
No, unfortunately, I'm stuck here in Nashville. I can make that happen next month.
I think it ought to just be a retreat that we go on for these things every Tuesday of the month.
That's a good idea.
Ron?
Hello?
Bunny, can I conduct a little personal business? Ann Elizabeth texted you about working if you want her to work over the... She'll be home for quite some time this winter, if you want her.
Yeah, I told her I would be able to use her in some capacity, so I'll reply back.
Okay, she just, I told her I would, I was gonna be on with you today and I would let you know you had reached out to her.
When does she get back?
Well, she's done exams before Thanksgiving and she's, I think I actually take her exams here in Nashville, so she'll be home probably mid-November until mid-January, I think.
Okay, now, good.
So.
I'll, I'll reach back out to her and we'll coordinate, but yeah, we've got, we've got plenty to do, so I'm sure I can use her for some.
But she'll be thrilled.
Yeah.
So she's looking at graduate schools now, too.
Oh, really? Still in, still in architecture, then?
She's gonna do architecture, she's made her decision, working for you confirmed it.
Oh, gosh, that's a heavy load.
I think that that's the right thing, it's her parents, we, we felt like that was the dream. We appreciate you, you know, allowing her that experience.
Oh, absolutely, enjoyed having her, so.
Ron, does that mean I'm not gonna be able to draw for you anymore?
You have the weekends off.
Oh, thanks, appreciate it. Jeanette is not gonna join us today, she is out of town, so we'll just wait on Gaven soon as we can start.
Mal, are you in a cave somewhere?
No, the light's shifting on me.
Gaven's probably getting his green screen on.
Sometimes it takes me a while to get on. But it went immediately today.
Gaven was, got injured, I think, running the trails, I heard.
Oh, really? I hadn't heard that, what happened?
I just saw an email chain, but it sounds like he fell when he was running the Warner Park Trails and I think broke a rib and...
Ah, good, wow.
I haven't, I haven't got to speak to him, so.
I just texted him, so hopefully he'll respond here shortly.
Doug, does three constitute a quorum?
Let's start with total number five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it does, yeah, I'll have to, I could look at the code real quick, I believe it does.
Let me check here. Gaven, are you on, did you just join, or is that someone else? I just called Gaven's office and they said he's out of town, but he plans on joining us, so if you guys, I guess Doug, can we go ahead and get started and hopefully he can join?
We have three.
Yeah.
Three is fine, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, everyone, to the October 13th meeting of the Historical Zoning Commission for City of Belme. For the record, let's do a call, roll call of board members in presence, I'm Mal Wall and I'm here, Ron Ferris.
Here.
Bunny Blackburn.
Here. Did you hear him out?
And Gaven Duke. Yes, yes. And Gaven Duke, he's, we don't know.
It looks like, it's like he's joining us right now, forgive him just a second. Gaven, can you hear us?
Wow, are you there?
Yes. We're just doing a roll call, if you would, just say your name, state you're here. Gaven?
Here.
Okay.
Great, we're also joined by the mayor today, city manager Beth Reardon, bill-pleading official Lyle Patterson, the city attorney Doug Berry, and the city recorder Edie Glazer. So our procedures for today, as always, oh, first, let's... Has anyone got any comments on the minutes for either August or September?
I do not, Ron?
I sent a couple of typos to Edie earlier, so if there are no other changes, can we have a motion for approval of the minutes? And the second?
Second, Gaven.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
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 Gaven?
Bunny, aye.
So it's unanimous? Okay. Procedures, Lyle will introduce each one of the items today. The applicant or his representative will then present their case for whatever it is that they're proposing to build. I would ask that you identify yourself for the record if you elect to speak. The board will discuss and ask questions, comments will be solicited from anyone who wishes to speak. We will close the public portion of the meeting and the board will discuss among ourselves the issues involved and then reach a decision. So all that being said, Lyle, first order of all business.
Application for certificate of appropriateness for Greg and Holly Gagon, 429 Royal Oaks, to approve the location of the water table for side and rear elevations. If you remember last month, the plans were approved, I think one of the stipulations was that the board wanted to see a water table and the brick step out one inch, but I believe there was some question as to alignment of windows or doors on the side, so Preston, if you're on, Preston Shea, you're up.
Here, I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Great, great. Thank you, Lyle, and thanks, everybody, on the commission. We, yeah, 429 Royal Oaks was approved with condition, one of those conditions being that the base or the brick below the main water table be projected an inch, which the drawings in front of you do reflect. Briefly, the other two conditions were removal of the rail at the porch and the addition of shutters and/or lanterns on the front elevations, and those two conditions have also been met. So what we have today is a request for modification to a previously approved submetal. I am, I was looking over the agenda and it's not necessarily the location of the water table that, that I was questioning. When I got into modifying the drawings, it just struck me that this home has a basement level and I just wondered aloud if the fact there were actual finish openings below the water table was taken into consideration upon initial request. I didn't think of it at the time, otherwise I may have mentioned. What thickening the base brick does is it requires us to either alter or install a a custom brick mold to carry the extra gap. It creates another inch gap in the airspace below the water table. It will require a custom foundation wall thickness to hold said brick and we were, we were simply wondering is, or may we go back to the previous version where the, the brick was aligned all the way down? It just seems like it's creating some potential issues for the inch thickness that I don't, I wonder if was considered at the initial request.
Preston, it's primarily where you have windows that's causing the problem, is that what you're...
Yeah, yeah, normally, I guess, in a foundation, if the brick is a little heavier, you know, and there aren't any finished openings below, it's probably no big deal at all. But just padding the inch, you know, adds an inch to the brick void, it requires we do a different brick mold from, from what's found elsewhere. It just added a bit of complexity, construction complexity that we wondered, you know, now that we've all had a chance to think about it, or I've had a chance to think about it a little further, is bumping the brick out an inch absolutely necessary?
I think it looks, Preston, this is Gaven, I think it looks better, even if it's just a band and even if it just steps out and then back in, it really helps that elevation on the, the right side view of the house. I don't know if you can go back to that one, wow. Yeah, it did, that would be a pretty large area of stucco, even if it just, it looks like you're stepping it out quite a bit back where it meets the porch, but if it, if it just were sort of like the band above even, that would help, I think.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we'd like to do, we like the, the water table, we like the horizontal lines of it, it...
Let me make a suggestion, because I like the water table as well, sorry to interrupt you, Preston, but may bring it to closure a little quicker, is that we're looking at this elevation and I've got it up on my screen where I'm looking at it in more detail. I could make a case that the, where the siding starts, there's a, there's a corner where the brick and the siding meet, you could extend that corner down and identify the brick corner a little more clearly and only step out at the area from the right of that forward and not do it where you have windows and underneath all that siding, that may make it a little a little easier to do. I know it's, it may be a stickler for detail, but it's one of those components that, that I think takes houses just up a simple notch. And I understand your concern about the window and the unique brick mold casing, so there's a way on this house where you could, you could still do it on the primary part of the residence and not to the left of that corner, and I think identifying the corner, Lyle, if you can identify the corner. It's this...
Which corner, Ron?
Right there.
This one?
Yes, if that came straight down, Preston, where you just had a subtle, a subtle indication of that whole thing being supported with that corner.
Yeah, I would, I would be very much on board with that, that would alleviate the concerns with the brick mold and, you know.
So from the left of that on around, you don't have the issues that you raised, respectful of those, and then from right of that around, we would get just that sense of base, I've done that before on, on projects, so I'd be fine with that.
On the right side, Ron, sheet 201, Lyle?
I'm getting here, hold on. 201.
Yes, sir, and you may actually be there, I'm looking at the front elevation, there you go, up a little bit.
Yeah.
Would we be okay if that very far right element were also just a band, so the, the brick would align as shown on this drawing? And I guess what I'm asking is, taking those same forms, allowing that to step out and then that very, very furthest right, because it does intersect the garage doors?
Yes. Yep.
Well, I would be fine with that and understand my charge there if, if you are.
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm great with that.
Thank you.
And can someone phrase a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revision to the water table as shown with the inclusion of it stepping out a brick at the areas defined. For Preston to just submit that to Lyle.
I would, I would second that motion.
All in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Gaven?
Aye.
Bunny?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, Preston.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Next item under old business, the application certificate of appropriateness for Chad and Deila Callendine, 4416 Chickering Lane for the partial demolition of existing home, property of significance and construct a new addition of more than 35%. So I'm gonna share my screen, whoever's representing, you are up.
Kerry Stringer. I was not at the last meeting, unfortunately, but I have watched and based on my understanding of the concerns, I tried to go back and address some of the massing and some of the other details that were brought up. I've attached, I think what Lyle is showing, attached a couple of more pictures to kind of help give a little bit more indication of what this property looks like from the front and the two sides that we're addressing. That's the right-hand side, that bay window that's shown there is part of what's proposed to go away and the garage addition, the new garage addition is anticipated to go on that. This that Lyle was pointing at is where the two-story structure for the grandmother, it's proposed to go with the portico shade that had some concerns as well. And then this one, obviously, is showing from the street how far back we're set off and it's a little askew from the street, it is not parallel with Chickering. But trying to show how recessed back the left addition is, and then this was just for reference, if we had any question about the main details of the main structure. As far as changes that we've made, well, Lyle, if you were gonna point at the rendering, I did update, let's look at that and I'll just kind of point out what changes have been made to try to accomplish what was the concerns that were addressed. On the left-hand side, the addition where one of the concerns that was brought up was the overall height of it. We have lowered the roof structure about 32 inches, which brings it, it originally was, the ridge was originally designed in line with the main structure, which we've dropped that about 32 inches. And in, in doing that, we added some dormers to the left-hand side, which I can point at on some of the other drawings, but that, we were hoping dealt with the massing issue as well as closed in the blank brick, empty kind of space above that bay window that was mentioned. And then moving to the right, that portico shade or that, the comments of it being kind of floating, kind of looking like a hospital bridge, we tried to address what you had commented on and bring the siding down to connect with the ground, so it didn't appear as floating as much, and then trying to address the main street and adds architectural elements, we moved some dormers and rearranged the floor plan to get those dormers on the front to add a little bit of depth and interest, architectural character there. And then moving all the way to the right, the garage addition, previously the concerns were the large flat terrace that was proposed with a kind of a stuck-on roof as it was per se. And so in, in a, in a dressing mat, we removed the covered porch portion, pushed the rooftop terrace off of the master suite to the rear of the addition, lowered the whole structure, so the ridge of this structure now aligns with the portico shade ridge. And tried to, try to simplify the whole thing a little bit and then changed the bay window there to mimic what's on the proposed addition on the left. So without being overly wordy, I can stop there or I can continue talking about the other elevations if we'd like.
This is Bunny Blackburn, I cannot see on my screen the far right side of the house. Can we, can you adjust that, for some reason, y'all, the video is, the... All of the people on the call are down the right, so, okay, that's better.
Lyle, do you want any other comments on the front?
Are there architectural drawings that represent this as well?
If you want to go to the side elevations, I can explain what changes were addressed there. Well, while we're on the rear, we'll stay there if you want to, Lyle, sorry. The rear of the portico shade, which is kind of right there in the middle, we kind of simplified, there's already the siding, so we've continued to have the siding to match the existing situation, but we have, on the rear of the brick structure, the grandmother's addition, by reconfiguring the floor plan, by lowering the roof, we ended up with two windows on the rear, which while there's still a blank space at the bottom, I know Ron had mentioned the concern of it being a blank slate, a blank wall back there previously. And I, I believe Ms. Callendine had explained that property rises pretty steeply in the back, but hopefully this change of adding those two windows on the second floor helps alleviate those concerns. And then if you move to the left of the rear, the left side of the rear, that shows how there's still a roof terrace off of the main, the master bedroom on the second floor, but it is only seen from the rear and the side, and you can see how, this shows how it's kind of tucked behind that garage addition. If you go down, Lyle, to the bottom of that same page, this shows the left-hand side of the grandmother's addition. Shows, by lowering the overall ridge and the eve height of that structure, we had, to get functional spaces, obviously, we had to add some dormers and this is the way that this was configured, hopefully accomplish that. We also, as part of this and simplifying some of it, all of the railing on this porch is drawn to show it is metal versus trying to mimic the railing around the front porch of the main structure, try to simplify that a little. And then if we move to the garage side, yeah, that shows how to keep, how, we tried to keep the massing of the roof down, get it lower and push the rooftop terrace to the, to the rear.
What, what is the head height in the portico shade, it looked like you had a human drawn in and I just didn't know what the, the height of the, the opening is at the portico shade.
I can look that up. Sorry. Height, the door height is, my computer's being slow, about eight foot six. Part of that is driven by, I mean, it could be raised a little if, if requested, part of that is raised by trying to keep the floor levels above and get structure in there on the second floor of the main house aligned with the second floor of the grandmother's face, the idea was to hope to align those, so it ended up a little lower than I normally would have drawn it, but there is a little bit of room for adjustment if needed.
Okay, just, just trying to make sure you could get a car through there.
Can we go back to the first drawing, the of the front elevation? That seems to be a lot, zoom back out if you would, because I can't see now, but the left is what I'm looking at. So that is a lot of open terrace there on the left. It seems to be out of proportion. Can you help me with that?
The idea was just because of the space was for the grandmother that she would enjoy and has desired a large patio space for potted plants and that sort of thing. And then to connect, create a hardscape to connect it to the opening to the greenhouse. Is on that side of the greenhouse and so there was a desire to connect her patio space with the function of that greenhouse. And so that's how it got to that big, just. It obviously we can, if need be, we could reduce that and create a path to the opening of that greenhouse, but.
Or just if you had some type of vegetation, if you had evergreen, you know, if we had some large boxwoods or some type of vegetation shown.
Right. Well, and there, if you go back to the pictures, I'm having a hard time finding the screen when I. But if you go back to the pictures that I'd sent from the front, that side of the house, the anticipation is to leave as much of that vegetation. To the rear of the driveway, but in front of. The proposed addition, the idea is to leave as much of that vegetation as possible and then supplement as needed. To kind of do what it is doing now, which is to kind of camouflage and help. Minimize the overall impact of that side. The footprint of the new is the same as the footprint of the old. Other than the patio, obviously.
I feel like the patio, I still, with or without vegetation, I feel like it is overwhelming to the rest of the structure. I just think it's too big. Proportionally to the rest of the structure. And so the greenhouse on the front picture, we cannot see the green, so is that. The picture that you had, can you show me, I guess go back to the other one that we were just looking at, your drawing that shows that.
It's not, it's not on the rendering. It's simply on the architectural drawings.
Okay, so can you tell me, point to where the greenhouse would show up here?
Me or Lyle?
Anybody. I just want to say. On the render, so it's not on the rendering, so where would it be?
It's on, if we go to the architectural drawings, it's on those. It sits so far back that from a rendering perspective, we left it off.
Maybe a, maybe a plan view and an elevation view of the architectural drawings would clarify it a little bit more.
Yeah, here, this is the plan view that Lyle has up now. The. The proposed patio goes, can you see the greenhouse on the top left of that? It's shaded in dark, it's as the existing structure. The left edge of the patio is just to the left of those doors.
So you're telling me that on this drawing, the patio is not on this drawing that we're looking at?
It is not on this. It's only on the site plans that was submitted prior.
Yeah, that's just, that is a very large patio. I just think it's too big.
Okay.
Let me, let me jump in here and say that if they have the numbers for the hardscape, they can, they can do that.
Well, unless from a visual. Architectural standpoint.
Can somebody speak to the elevation difference from the street to this house? We're talking twenty feet, twenty-five feet?
I can pull up the topo, that'll take me a second and I can.
So that patio is going to sit somewhere right in here, if you can see the blue.
Yeah, but it'll be, it'll be even with where that, the car is right now, right? So it's elevated. It's not down that low, is it?
No.
Yes. Well, the debut of the top of her, his blue is drawn. Well, his blue went away.
Yeah, I think if it's shown, if it fits the numbers and if we're able to have assurance that there's some type of. Buffering, maybe evergreen vegetation, that would meet my needs, I think.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure the owners are happy to. To do that.
How many acres total is there, Lyle? Do you recall?
No, I don't.
It's, it's a pretty big lot from what I remember.
It is. Do we have a site on here?
This is Deila Callendine, the home. It's, I think, right around three, just under three acres. And I do plan on landscaping around it, just FYI. I actually have boxwoods even held in the tree line, ready to move into places that I had to transplant.
Is there, is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak for or against this project? If not, let's close the public portion and start our deliberation. So are we happy with the patio if we add the requirement that. We screen visually from the road with landscaping?
I'm good with that. I think they've done a much better job at making the composition for the elevation from where it was before.
Yeah, absolutely.
I understand Bunny's comment. I think that what. Brings me into a comfort level is that knowing. That the greenhouse and the portion of the residence that's behind it, it starts to align with that. Right now, it looks like it's just sticking out into space. With that. Rendering, but I'm comfortable with the caveat that we require some landscaping and. There you go, Lyle. I think it even extends.
It extends beyond that, all the way past the patio. The greenhouse is probably another six feet to the left of where that rendering shows the patio.
Right. I'm looking at the drawings on another screen and connecting the dots, but. I'm comfortable that. I think the revisions made to the project overall, I'm pleased with. From what we viewed last month.
If, if it is, if there's substantial landscaping so that it doesn't feel like it's just hanging out there and it's going to look even bigger because you're lower on the street looking up at it. Then I'm fine with that.
Bunny, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the revised plans with the exception, well, actually just. Clarification that there will be substantial landscaping to mediate the size of the patio.
I have a second.
A second here from Gaven.
Okay. Ron, your vote?
I vote aye.
Bunny?
I vote aye.
Gaven?
Aye.
Did I ask Ron?
Yes.
Yeah, and I vote, I vote aye.
All right, thank you. Business. The second applicant has asked permission to go first. Mr. Chairman?
As long as there's no objection?
I do not object. Ron?
No objection, Gaven.
No objection, Bunny.
Catherine Sloan, you are up. Two thirteen Paddock Place, the application certificate of appropriateness for Jerry Hancock. Two thirteen Paddock Lane. For the demolition of existing home, property of conservation and construct a new single-family home.
Yes, hi, this is Catherine Sloan. Can you hear me, Lyle?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm presenting for two thirteen Paddock Lane, as Lyle said. Currently, there's a nineteen forty-five, one-story rental house. That is in rather poor condition. It's been a rental house for a few years, so we are proposing to replace it with a traditional Dutch colonial house that fits into the neighborhood. Better in design and scale. Yes, that's the existing house. The new house is designed with correct architectural details and materials and massing. In an effort to make it look like it could have always been on the street. Designed to tie into the surrounding houses and neighborhoods. But be a bit different. There are a few houses on the block that are the kind of one and a half story with the three dormers across the front, so we wanted to do something a little bit different, but a similar scale. I've used details like the flat song, wood shake roof, beveled cedar weatherboard. Wood double hungs and. Field stone for foundation and chimneys. Just to give. As appropriate of an architectural character as we can. Yes, those are the elevations. So it's all the, it'll be painted weatherboard with the exception of the chimneys and the foundation, which will be the stone.
That's beautiful.
Thank you.
This is Bunny.
Hey Bunny.
That is really good looking.
Thank you. We just, like I said, we want it to look like something that could have been original to Belmead. Just really think about the right materials, massing, scale, you know, it's a small lot, but it's a family of four and. You know, they need the two-car garage and. You know, space for the kids and everything, so just trying to. Make it look not huge from the street, but get the, you know, program that they need.
So this is Gaven. Is there, hey Catherine?
Hey Gavin.
Is there any other examples along that street that is in the packet?
Yes, right there, uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one to the right of it. And then that's two down, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, look, are they all pretty similar in size?
They are, mm-hmm. Some of them are a whitewashed brick, like I said, so there's the one and a half story with dormers. I believe there are three of those, so I wanted to do something a little bit different. But still one and a half stories, so that's kind of where the gambrel roof came from. With kind of the shed across the front. But they are all very similar in size.
What is the lot size?
The lot size is eighteen thousand five hundred.
And how many square meters in the house? I'm looking, there's the lot size.
Well, does the project, is it going to require variances for rear setbacks? What are the variances that you're going to be asking for?
Yes, the rear setback and FAR. And I believe that's all. And footprint, excuse me, and footprint. We're staying within a similar footprint. Well, if you go to A two, I believe, I've shown the footprint on the houses on either side. They're around thirty-five hundred, and so we're aiming to stay around thirty-five hundred as well. Yes, so ours is the one in the middle.
So board members, I think we have maybe some slicing and dicing to do on how we. Organize our reaction to this. I'm guessing this is first, is this first a project that we vote on for demolition?
Yes.
I'm not sure that I'm comfortable advising on footprint or variance modes. I'm comfortable with the direction of the design as a broad statement. I'm comfortable with the demolition of the existing house. I've seen it. It does not. Rise to the level of significance, in my opinion. That'd be my quick summary.
I agree, Ron.
Yeah, and I went back also, it's, it's not worth saving.
I agree.
So all of the. All the variation, or the variances, rather, will be going to the Board of Zoning Appeal. That's the next stop, which is next week.
So we would see this post. The variance board's reaction. I don't want to. I don't think we can make any assumptions on where the variance board would take this, but. Broadly Catherine, I'm comfortable with the direction and the concept of the house style. But I don't think the board is in a capacity to advise upon the variances and the footprint and FAR.
Yeah, I would concur with that. I like the style.
Well, let's go ahead and deal with demolition, guys, and get that. Done, since we have to do them in order and then discuss in the house. Is that okay?
Or Mal, you want to close them?
Yes, let's close the public portion. Discussion with the board itself. I think we're in agreement that the house can be demolished. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I made that the house at two thirteen Paddock Lane meets. We believe it should be, we should allow it to be demolished. I don't know how a better way to word that, but. This house can't be demolished.
And the second?
I would second that. Gaven.
Okay. Ron, and your vote?
Ron votes aye.
Bunny?
Bunny votes aye.
Gaven?
Gaven votes aye.
Mal votes aye. So the house can come down. And I don't, I don't think we can. Go any further with this house, though I really think it's a great job. Because we don't know what, if anything, zoning appeals is going to require in changes.
Does this come back before us then, if it passes the variances?
I mean, are we not, is the board not looking at this for the design approval and then the board can determine whether they can encroach on the rear? As the other houses on that street have?
Can we not approve it and then, or at least discuss it and just say, being their approval, we have no authority to make any of those decisions.
Excuse me for interjecting. I think you can approve it conditioned upon the variances being granted, and if for some reason they're not granted, it'll come back and you'll have to. Address the design without one or more of the variances. Might save you time, save the owner time to go ahead and approve the condition on the variances. And request them being granted. I see no problem with either approach, really.
Is, Mal, is there anybody here to speak for or against this and that? Going down that road, I think we have some obligation to entertain anybody that has concerns about the variance that will be.
That's a good point, Ron.
Yes, that's fair.
To the variance board, I'm. Public hearing is still closed. I'm of the opinion that we would defer this pending the oversight of the variance board. I think there's a lot to consider. And. I'm complimentary of the design, but I think there's a lot of things to consider that merit public oversight and discussion. And that we would defer it if the Board of. Zoning Appeals grants this, I think we could quickly move on it. There are some design discussions that I think we would want to have, maybe with some specificity about certain things. Broadly, I like the design and commenting back to Catherine and the applicant, I like the design and where it's headed. I can't advise. On the scale and size without. Influencing the variance board and the process that needs to be taken down that path.
Wow, could we, could we look at that, could we look at the plan view again where the sixty-foot setback was again? And the existing house sits in that area now, correct?
Catherine?
Oh, Gaven, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking Lyle. A portion, a portion of it does, yes.
Okay, so where it says the one-story garage, is all the yellow, does that, is that a variance, everything in yellow?
Yes, that's all behind the rear setback.
And, and looking at the other houses on the street, could we go back to that map again and see, are they similarly placed on their lots?
Yes, they are actually closer to the rear property line than this one. The one on the end. Is twelve feet off the rear property line and is over on footprint and FAR, as is the one to the right. This used to be the special impact area on the city map. It's no longer known as special impact, but it is a given that it does get a little more. Special treatment, if you will, due to the constricting envelope and some of the cases, the front. In some of the cases, the front and rear setback cross over each other.
As related to a house and not a pool.
Right.
You know, I, and we have, we have approved plans that have then gone to the BCA after we approved them.
Yes.
And I would rather go ahead and discuss it, just save us and them time, discuss the design, and obviously, we can't give them BCA approval, but if we give, if it doesn't get approved by the BCA, it would come back to us anyway.
I mean, that was my understanding of the process.
Well, let's do this then. Let's reopen briefly for public comment, if there's anyone in attendance who would like to speak for or against this. And then we can close that. If not, then we can start the discussion on the design issues. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Yes, this is Kyle Neal, neighbor at 208 Leake Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So my property adjoins in one corner, and if I'm following you here now, it sounds like the question of variance in the rear would be better heard by the Board of Variants as opposed to you guys. So that would be the better opportunity to question and consider that. Is that accurate?
Procedurally, yes, that's the way it's got to go. We've got, we can't deal with setbacks directly.
Okay. Well, then I don't think my questions are ripe, and I'll postpone that for that hearing.
Well, are you concerned about negative impact on your property from, from the garage?
Potentially, yes. I, at this point, just looking at the drawings, I can't see how far back it comes, and that's certainly a green area back there. And the design looks beautiful, of course. I'm just curious how far back that's going to come into the backyard area. And so that, that would be the potential concern, not necessarily a true concern, but a potential one to, as a neighbor, I would want to understand.
Can we be discussing this? This is historic zoning, not Board of Zoning Appeal. That's, that's really kind of a Board of Zoning Appeals question. I, if I understand, I do think the gentleman's comments kind of go to what Ron Ferris's motion was, and that is it would be better as a matter of policy and precedent to defer this until the Board of Zoning Appeal is heard. I really think either procedure would be lawful, but if you have people here who have concerns, if they want to express to BCA, it might make this board less mission, less comfortable in giving them any kind of approval, because, you know, we want people to be heard and get them to hear. I'll leave it up to you all.
I don't see any reason for us not to go ahead and finish our piece of it. And if the Board of Zoning Appeals makes him shorten the garage, or whatever, then that's going to be a big enough change that it would have to come back. If the Board of Zoning Appeals does what they have done in the past, then the applicant is through the process.
Just so the citizen knows, the neighbor knows there's a chance to be heard at that board.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's clear, yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, recommendations on design?
Can we go back to that first screen of the front elevation? An initial question I have is just on the shutters. Are they going to be doubled so that you could, because those, the shutters would not cover those windows?
Yes, I would do those as a, I call it a bifold shutter.
Yes.
Where they would be double.
Okay. That was an initial question that I had.
Yes, for sure.
One thing that I, a comment that I would make is that I appreciate the architectural style and the attention to detail and the materials. We are encouraging the highest quality of, just the highest quality to be built in our community, and I appreciate that this is really sensitive to the other houses size-wise on the street, and just style-wise, and the quality of products that you want to use. So I just, and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Bunny.
Yeah, and Bunny, I agree with you. Ron, you, you've got some reservations. Let's hear it.
It's not reservations. I've stated at the beginning, I think Catherine's done a very nice job. I think that the, the submission in fairness to what this board has required of past applicants lacks some of the emphasis that we require. We don't have a materials board yet, and there are some, these are not construction-level drawings nor that we asked for those, but I think there's some, some details that we could do a deep dive in. It's, it's a, it's a CAD drawing, I'm assuming it's to scale, but it also, as I said, in fairness to previous submissions, we've required and asked for a fair amount of more information.
Do we not have a materials list for this?
I don't see one. I don't see a board identifying those, and maybe I'm missing it, so.
Yes, law has it. Yeah, so the, like I said, wood windows and then the beveled cedar siding. The wood, the wood shake roof, copper gutters and half rounds, or potentially copper, maybe painted to match the trend, that probably will be a budget decision. And then just local Tennessee fieldstone on the foundation and chimneys.
Thank you.
And the, the wood rail, you know, we're, probably will have vintage millworks do, you know, the wood rail and the front porch and the columns and brackets and, you know, get all that ju- just right.
Yeah, Catherine, those are some of the details that we want to emphasize, and you are, in ensuring that the drawings you're presenting net themselves out in the finished product. So I say that respectfully, I think that they will, but that's, my emphasis is to ensure that we're getting the same, same requirements we've asked of previous submissions, and I can see it here.
Okay, great.
Broadly, I'm comfortable with the design. I think that the scale and that is really outside of our overview. As a design element, I'm, I think it's an attractive home.
Thank you.
Got, board, do, do we have a requirement that the drawings we look at be the, be construction drawings?
We have in the past.
Lyle, do you want to show them the architectural drawings? Those two right there are just kind of more renderings. They're not final CDs, but it's the, you know, the roof plan and the CAD drawings. Is that kind of more of what you're after?
Do, do we have heights shown on the elevations?
Roof heights? Gaven, sorry, you cut out for a second.
Yeah, so on the roof heights of the elevations, are they in this package?
Lyle, if you zoom in on the front elevation, right there, if you can zoom in kind of where your cursor is, it's called out.
Yeah, I think it's good to see these.
Yes, I see those now.
Okay, and that roof height is, let's see, thirty feet to the ridge.
Thank you.
The highest part, thirty feet, uh-huh.
How does that compare to the other heights of the other houses on the street?
Even, I'm sorry, Bunny, I don't have those exact heights. I would guess that it would be similar, since they're one and a half stories as well, but I don't have those exact heights.
Bunny, it's, it's very comparable.
Okay.
And we're doing everything we can to, you know, keep that down. We're just doing nine-foot ceilings on the first floor instead of ten, and then everything upstairs is, you know, pretty much in a dormer space. So it'll be, you know, six, five or six-foot tall knee walls that, that slope up. So everything up there will be that, you know, traditional kind of tucked into dormers and niches, anything we can to keep that as low as possible.
Okay.
And that's why I did on the right side, where you see the, that's their dining room with the railing. That's why I didn't extend the upstairs over that, just in another effort to, you know, keep the, the massing down.
How are the corners, what are the treatments on the corners? Are those beveled corners or are they?
Mitred.
Mitred, beveled, okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Mitred weatherboard at the corners, no corner boards.
Board members, I'm looking at all the drawings on another screen. I'm comfortable with the design.
Yeah, I think it's a very nice design.
Lyle, did you want to pull up the inspiration pictures just for, since some of them are kind of similar? I don't know if that would help. That's a much larger house, but as far as the roof line goes, that's a good illustration and the materials. Still larger, but maybe a little bit closer in scale. Again, just the roof line on that one. I think the next one shows the front that would be.
Mm-hmm.
So that is a good illustration of the, the scale of it.
Well, I am impressed. I just, it's refreshing to see, I really like it and think that it accomplishes what we are trying to ensure, that we have quality materials and quality plan. So thank you.
Thank you. Great, thanks so much.
Yeah, and I think the, my question would be like on this inspirational photo, the shutters that are on the center window above.
Mm-hmm.
Your decision not to do those on the, your, on that house?
I'm doing a double hung in the middle with side lights, and whereas they did two double hungs.
Okay.
I just, I kind of wanted to break it up a little bit. Shutters on all three across the front on, on this one seemed a little much to me, and that's a children's den kind of playroom up there. So I just thought that double hung with side lights would be just a little something different than the double hungs in the bedrooms.
Okay.
When I did it, when I did three pair of double hungs with shutters across the front, it just looked a little too kind of modular, a little too redundant. Just wanted to break that up just a bit.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah. And the cutouts on those shutters, they're, they're really understated, but they actually live in a store home on Bellewood now that has the same cutouts in the shutters, so we wanted to do the same here, just.
I love that. I just think that's just a nice little touch.
Yeah, and it's special to them, since they have it on their existing home, so I thought that was a neat kind of little touch.
Love the mitred corners, too.
Yes, I think that's such a clean, classic look versus the corner boards. I really prefer that as well.
And the stone with the copper, it's, it's lovely. The front works very nice in scale. You lined up everything very nicely.
We'll get James Dunn to do some really pretty brackets on either side, just the real good thick ones with a pretty historical profile.
Well, Bunny, would you like to make a motion for approval?
I move for approval of the plans as presented.
I'll second it, Ron Ferris.
Gaven, your vote?
Aye.
Bunny, your vote?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Mal is aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Nice one. New business, the application for certificate of appropriateness for Raymond Hensler, 106 Nickel Lane, for the demolition of existing home, property preservation, going to be returning at a later date with plans for a new single-family home. Whoever is representing, you're up, and I will share my screen.
Okay, Lyle, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, it's Alan DeCooper. I'm representing the potential bidder, buyers and the Henslers. And so we appreciate your time, Lyle, and the commission's time and their service to Belle Meade. I know, I know this is, takes valuable time out of everybody's day, and I appreciate it. This house is unusual. It has not been inhabited for nearly a decade. The pre, two owners ago, when they sold it to the Henslers, pretty much demoed the inside, taking out the fixtures and interior elements, the bathrooms, the kitchen, et cetera. The house has eight-foot ceilings. There's substantial organic growth on the inside. It's not had, it's not been conditioned in several years, and there's some issues with Thanks for showing the pictures there, Lyle. Not really contributing to the neighborhood at this point.
Is the swimming pool still back there?
Yes, it is.
How long have the Henslers owned this property?
I am going from memory, I want to say six years, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I don't have that file in front of me.
Was the house prior to them purchasing it, was someone living in the house?
I don't believe so. It had, it was in the same family from tax records for over, it was like forty years. And that, the, the heirs of the family removed the interior elements, the paneling, the, the plumbing fixtures, the cabinetry and things like that. The Henslers did not.
Do you know when it was built?
That's indeterminate. Tax records are, are.
I think they say nineteen forty-five. The tax records.
Mm-hmm. That's about right, from, from what I could tell.
So the Henslers own it and are selling it to someone who is trying to get approval for demolition? Is that?
That's, that's correct. That's all we're asking for today is the demolition.
And you're trying to see if you can tear it down?
That's correct.
Wow, what is the size of the lot again?
It's a little bit over an acre.
Thank you.
There's the pool, jeez.
I've actually been in the house and on the property several times over the last few years. It is deplorable.
Don't hold back, Lyle.
I agree, that looks pretty bad.
I was hoping to get Ron over there and see what he thought, but horrible works.
Is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak for or against this So if not, let's close the public portion and have a deliberation, or discussion at least, on what we should do. It's pretty bad shape from my brief visit to the property.
I concur. It looks, from the photos, to be pretty bad.
I've, I've done a drive-by, I did not walk in it, but I can see from the pictures and I've heard stories. Does not check my boxes of concern being it, it's in the conservation category, correct, not the property of significance category. I think the applicants and our potential buyers, I forget how we phrased this before, but removal of the residents, whoever does that needs to understand. but removal of the residence, whoever does that needs to understand that it begins to negate certain benefits that may be available to them regarding footprint, bulk standard components. So the board would assume no, no liabilities or knowledge of those issues that could preclude if they do take the house down. Is that a fair statement, Lyle?
Yes.
Also, they need to understand, too, that when we approve the demolition, that in no way gives approval, I mean, they have to go through the same process to build another house there.
Absolutely.
And the, the one thing that I, I'm, and I've done a drive-by, too, I don't, you know, I don't see any reason that this can't be a house that is demolished. However, it is bothersome, and we don't want the precedent that a home is neglected and then deemed deplorable because it's been neglected. And so I do want that just to be on the record, that not maintaining a property is not a reason to tear it down. I don't believe, I mean, it's kind of sad looking at it, because that, this, this view that we're looking at has the, well cottage has some nice lines to it. I don't see any reason to save this house at this point myself, but I just want to make sure that that, that it is understood that neglect is not a reason to demolish something necessarily, because that could get us into some, in fact, I think we've discussed that already in one case.
Yeah, I think that's well said, Bunny. I'm not, I'm not making my opinion on the, I don't, I think this house suffers from many issues.
More than neglect. Yeah.
Yeah, architecturally, I don't hold it in, in a high standard.
Nor do I.
The ceiling heights, the composition. So.
Yeah, I agree.
Just a side note, do we know where that pool is in relationship to the property lines, Lyle?
I do not, off the top of my head. I mean, I could leave this screen and measure it if you're just curious.
No, I'm just, in that same vein, the owner should know that, you know, if this pool is demolished and it's outside of the building envelope, it's likely it can't be built back in this location.
Correct.
But if they were to leave it, they could renovate it.
Correct.
I suspect that the street will be glad to have this house demolished instead of having a decrepit, abandoned house on their street.
You know what, my phone won't ring as much, it'll be good.
I suspect.
So, so can I have a motion for permission to demolish this house?
I'd like to make a motion, this is Gaven, to, to do the demolition of this house.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ron, your vote?
I vote aye.
Bunny?
I vote aye.
Gaven?
I vote aye.
Mal votes aye.
May I ask a question? I'm Julie Simpson, I'm working with Alan DeCooper, working with him with these clients. And this is my first time here, so forgive me if this is an inappropriate question, but I know that the buyers are, are wanting to put up a painted white brick home in its place. But Lyle, I think you had mentioned that's probably not what the commission would want or approve. Could anybody give me any direction about that that I could relay to the new owners?
That's not necessarily true. Not about white brick, it's more about style, ratio, composition, integrity with Bellmead. So the painted brick is not really an issue. We've had painted brick come before, so I think we had one on Royal Oaks, I believe that was painted brick we just looked at during this session. So it's not.
Look back to our guidelines, we spent a lot of time writing the guidelines, and so I would encourage them to read the guidelines.
I, I, they broadly, the, the board does not have a position of discouraging painted brick homes. What we're after are homes that are identifiable in style. That does not mean traditional, it means a clear identifiable style and a home that is, demonstrates character, proportion, scale.
Quality.
And is sympathetic to the neighborhood and quality. But as far as a brick painted home, no discouragement from the board at that level at all. Is that fair, board?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I would think so. There's some even modern houses that have gotten passed with white brick.
Well, this is terrific, thank you, I appreciate this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, this is Alan, I appreciate your all's consideration.
Thank you. Board, once again, are great. So until next month.
Thank you.
Worried about the mayor, he hasn't moved the whole meeting.
Maybe, maybe asleep.
Hey, Gaven, we heard an accident, or is, I guess I should save this till the meeting is officially adjourned, but then hold on after that.
I'm, I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
We're, we're officially adjourned.
Okay. So did you, you had a fall, is that right?
Yeah, I had a fall in the, the park, broke three ribs and partial collapsed lung, but I'm good.
Wow, scary.
Are you at a nursing home? Is that where you?
I am nursing something, Ron. It involves tonic, though.
The mayor, the mayor is not asleep, by the way.
Here's the mayor.
At the White House.
That's awesome. That is hysterical.
Thank you.
Now you're conducting great meetings, we're gonna keep you on, you're, you're hired.
Right, now, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we change commissioners or change chairman every year.
Draw straws.
Draw straws.
Are we at a year now? Have we been going at this?
No, not yet, not yet, we're close.
Okay.
You going back to your nursing home, we'll tell you when you're.
I'll wake up later. Thank you all.
I'm gonna end the meeting, thank you.
Early voting, early voting starts tomorrow.
Great.